Okay, good evening. It's finally six o'clock on the dot. Welcome, thank you for coming. Today is March 3rd. It's a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Calamasa. We'll start with, we'll call the meeting order at six o'clock, and we'll do a real call, please.
Councilmember Kundif?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Manley?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cervantes?
Here.
Mayor Molina?
Here. And for the record, let us show that City Manager Kobo is here, City Attorney Flower, City Clerk Gertis, Finance Director Reed, Planning Director Lucia, Intrum Public Works Director Shakir, Mike is nearby, Fire Chief O'Connell, and Sheriff Captain Northrup. At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Chief Chen, would you like to lead up?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chen. Okay, at this time, it's communications to the public. I have one slip from Ryan Harold, if you'll come up for it. Speak right into the microphone.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for the time. My name is Ryan Harold, and I actually am a resident of the City of Calamasa. So, I'm here actually tonight, though, to be a representative of Crafton Hills College. And so, Crafton Hills College Fire Academy, I'm the director of the program there, and so, our program has been up and running since 1982, training firefighters in the region. And I'm proud to say that my relationship with Chief O'Connell started the conversation regarding a donation of a fire engine to our fire academy last year. And so, with that said, that engine is now in service. It's training future firefighters. And I'm here just to express my gratitude on behalf of President Dr. Kevin Haran of Crafton Hills College, and also the Board of Trustees from Sammernote Community College District. So again, thank you so much. We rely so heavily for the success of our program on community partnerships. And so, this is another example of how we've been able to work with our community partners to procure an asset that would be impossible for us as a program to be able to get our hands on. So again, Chief O'Connell, for his commitment to keeping this as a local resource, with the emphasis on training our own local firefighters, many of your current Calamasa firefighters are graduates of our program, and we're very proud of that. So, I come with an invite. We opened a training center, a public safety training center, in January 2024. It's an incredible facility, and so, what we would like to do is memorialize this relationship, this donation, if you will, with a tour of the training center facility, schedules availing, whatever chief can work out with you folks. Or, also, we can have the engine brought back over here if it's easier for the council to take a photo op. We want to memorialize this and make sure that it gets pushed out, so that everyone can be recognized for the work that's going on. So, I will leave that up to the chief to work with staff. On that invitation, again, it's open. And then, my other last piece, as a resident, I want to thank the city manager for your work on the Calamasa Insider Podcast. So with that said, to you and your staff who put that together, I know that's a tremendous amount of work, and I want to express my gratitude for understanding and hearing what's happening in the community, and some history and background on the projects and decisions that are being made in the community, the transparency, the information, and oftentimes, the why. And so, I appreciate your work on that. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Do we have any other comments on that? Okay, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda, the consent calendar, and waiver of full reading of ordinances.
I'll make a motion.
No, I actually want to pull Agenda Number, one of the agendas from the meeting.
Okay.
Agenda number six from the Summer Winds.
Number six.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll correct that. That would be the Agenda Consent Calendar, items one through five, and item seven and eight. And then, a second, we have a motion for those items.
Yeah, I make a motion as you stated.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No oppose? Okay. Edgar?
Yeah, I actually have a question for the Agenda Item Number Six. So, for, I know it's just to release the bonds, but I want to just confirm that everything was actually covered, and final walkthroughs were actually approved. Before we move forward with approving the item today, I just want to make sure, on the plans itself, are there any additional stop signs when exiting the park, and any stop signal signs on the concrete?
Mike, can you answer that question?
I think, I think I can. What this is, is a maintenance bond. The maintenance bond was started about a year ago, because what we did is we looked at Faithful Performance Bonds, although I'm reading this, and it says Faithful Performance, so maybe I'm incorrect. But, we did do a final inspection. As councilmembers are aware, we have found some deficiencies in some of the signing and striping throughout the tract. For this particular bond, I believe it was related to the park, and some street improvements right in front of the park. So, I believe there was an inspection done, and that the facilities are there. But, if there are things to be cleaned up, we will add it to the efforts that we're doing trackwide.
So, I just want to clarify, you are asking specifically at the park, in the parking lot, for the park?
Yes, for this item, because this is to the Summer Wind Charles Plan Phase One Park, correct? So, we're talking about the park itself.
We are, that is correct.
So, Mike, if we, if there are deficiencies in terms of installation of things that were supposed to be on the plans, then we should not release these bonds until those are done, correct? We have to verify whether or not those items are included in the plans.
You are correct. We should, we should continue the item.
So, our staff's recommendation based on this would be to continue this item, so staff can do further research on this before we bring it back forward.
Okay, Edgar, would you like to make a motion to that effect?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I want to make a motion to, to continue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If that item passes. Thank you. Okay, this brings us to Sheriff Captain Report. I, yeah, that's if I'm correct.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. Go over some stats from 2024, the calendar year. We'll start with some Part One crimes. This is just to give you a total of the numbers that we had for Part One crimes, calls for service, arrests, those type of things, for the whole year. So, as you probably all are aware, there was no homicides. We did have, we had no robberies during 2024, and 49 aggravated assaults, for a total of Part One violent crimes of 51. And that was up from 30 the year before. So, and again, those were the highest numbers, and the only numbers that were up were the aggravated assaults. And basically aggravated assaults are any felony batteries, to include domestic violence. So, it's kind of, those are kind of those hard numbers that you can control or can't control as law enforcement, right? And then, we'll go to property crimes, burglaries, there was 23, auto theft, 42, larceny thefts were 150, for a total of 215 property crimes. The only category that was up were the auto thefts. That was up from 33 the year before. We did see a significant decrease in theft. It was 212 in 2023, and went down to 150 in 2024. Total Part One crimes were at 17.4% down from the previous year. So, any questions on the Part One crimes?
Nope.
Okay. Priority one, average response times. So, priority one calls, in 2023, they are about 7.17 minutes. It was slightly increased in 2024 to 7.46. And then, priority two crimes, in 2023, they were at 23, almost 24 minutes. And in 2024, we saw it decrease to just under 22 minutes. Any questions on the Part One or the average response times? So, just real quick, the priority one calls are any calls that are, there's an immediate threat to life or property, right? Those are priority one calls. Priority two, there's an active crime being, that's occurring, but it's not a threat to property or to life. And then, we have priority three calls. Those were down. They were about 40 minutes, 2023. They went down to just under 36 minutes. And then, our priority four calls were at 53 minutes in 2023, and they went down to 45 minutes in 2024. Those are their response times. And then, your priority three and four calls are basic, priority three calls are calls that are in progress essentially, but there's no threat to property or to life. Simple noise complaints would fall under that category. And then, all of our priority four calls are past calls. So, they're basically something that's occurred a day ago, hours ago, and there's no active threat, and there's no ongoing crime. Any questions?
No.
So, calls for service, in 2024, there was a total of 6,703 calls for service. Citizen-initiated calls for service were 3,685. Deputy-initiated calls for service were 3,018. And then, of those calls, 112 were arrests. Those were bookable arrests, not something that we cited in the field. And that was up from 2023, where we had 86 arrests. That's a general overview of the 2024 numbers. Any questions? Just one more thing. Last week, on the 24th of February, we did have a two-vehicle collision in the off-road, or the hills off of Singleton. There was a kid on a motorcycle that was up there riding in the hills, and collided with an Explorer. And just want to remind everybody that that's not an off-road area, you know. And the reason, the reason that we don't want people up there is because these accidents do happen, and when they happen, they're hard to find sometimes. We have to potentially get up into the hills and move people back to the streets where they can seek medical aid. Unfortunately, this particular case, the victim of the collision was brought back down to Singleton Road, where they were provided aid. Any questions?
No. Any trends for '25? I know we're barely into March. I know we've had some mailbox requests.
Yeah, we've had some, some thefts from, from the mailboxes. You know, the biggest thing is, I just need to encourage everybody to report crimes, right? We were out, earlier out of business on Calamasa Boulevard for a theft. The deputies were out there. The sergeant was out there. He started talking with the business manager, or the workers out there, and they had mentioned that they had been victims of theft several times at that particular business, and they hadn't reported it. So, we need, we need our citizens, we need our business owners to report those crimes, so that we know how to deploy, right? So, we can't deploy if we don't know what's going on. So, we just encourage reporting of crimes.
Thank you.
Any comments?
I got a question, Captain.
Yes, sir.
Concerned by the accident up in the hill, any suggestions from council, from our team here, that they would like to ask?
No, I think just getting the word outright, that that's not an off-road area. And I think we're going to try to get some programs implemented, so we can do some enforcement of our off-road up there. We did apply for a grant for an off-road vehicle, as well as some time to man that vehicle. We're waiting to see if that grant will be approved. But hopefully, it does get approved soon, and we can start some off-road enforcement up in that area. Also, you know, these, these dirt bikes are, they are not made for the street. So, if you're, you know, if the people up there are riding dirt bikes, and they're not registered, they're subject to tow. If we stop and we, we stop you out on the street, your motorcycle can be towed if it's not registered.
There are a couple of areas in Calamasa where that's kind of a normal occurrence. I know up where I live, up above homes and county line and homes, the issue up there is, is the bikers, they always say they have the, it's private property.
Yes.
They have the owner's permission. But we also have equestrian riders up there, and so, there's a conflict there. The bikes scare the horses, and, you know, I've talked to them a couple of times, because it's right by my house, just asking everybody to be respectful of each other, you know.
Right.
If they're going to do that, be safe at least. But there's no way to see, if, you know, there's been a couple of times when kids got hurt, they went over the handlebars, and I don't know how they got them out. You wouldn't even see them, actually, unless their friends, you know, told someone.
Yeah, oftentimes, they're, they're, they're moved by private vehicle, which is not ideal, because you could, you know, further injure the person. But, at the same time, if that gets them down to help, you know, whereas, you know, sometimes it's tough for us to have the resources and the vehicles to get up in that area. We do have some, but they'd be coming from the Cabazon area.
And there's signage around advising no trespassing.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief O'Connell?
Metamayor, members of the council, good evening. I want to follow up on the Sheriff Captain's report there. That was a pretty significant call. Some of the details, it was a remote area rescue. The 16-year-old rider of the bike, as we got it, was pinned under a vehicle. We responded in a timely manner. We had a very difficult time making access to the area, locating the patient. There was a lot of confusion. We were in the, in the process of summonzing a helicopter. We don't have drone or off-road vehicle access to some of those areas. And the male patient was extricated. They had to lift the vehicle off of him and bring him out. He was transported, not with one, but with both of our paramedics out of the area, in critical condition. And again, just to reiterate what Captain Northrup was talking about, those areas are, and it's not the only area. Those areas, equestrians, the off-road motorcycles, the off-road vehicles, and people just kind of go crazy out there. And this is the worst kind of result that you could have. I don't have any follow-up. I don't know what the status of the young man was, but he was, he was in pretty poor condition. I responded, in fact, I responded from our weekly staff meeting, with the rest of our resources, to try to make access up there. But, it's a significant problem.
It's the busiest right after rain.
Of course.
And it's real muddy.
Everybody wants to go play in the mud. So, okay, continuing on, I'm going to start with some statistics tonight. Year-to-date, we're at 436 calls for service, as compared to 308 last year at this time, for a 41% increase. 278 of those, for 63%, were medical aids. 16 for another roughly 3.5%. Were miscellaneous public assist calls, lift assists, unknown type medical aids, when we send the crews out to go help people off the floor, back into bed, et cetera. And our fire responses, a total of 10 for about 2% of our overall call volume. Auto or mutual aid responses given account for 21% of our calls. However, of the 94 responses to our neighbors, we've been counseled 29 of those calls. So, we're actually, 14% of our calls are auto aid calls. And I use that to take a look back at that 41% increase. And we're still on, we're better than 25% on our own, increased calls for services compared to last year. And then, incidentally, auto aid or mutual aid received a total of nine calls this year, for a total of 2% of our call average. So, we're holding our own. We're, we're doing well with what we have. Significant calls, we just talked about the one auto extrication off-road, remote area rescue. On the 20th, in the morning of the 20th, freeway commuter traffic, we had a vehicle go off the freeway, overturn, and it was a traffic collision with a rollover and extrication, where our folks had to cut the driver of the vehicle out of the car for transport to the hospital. And then, on the 23rd, we had an outside fire, a small vegetation fire over in the foothills off Mustang, another remote area, in that open space area. Any questions on our calls for service? All right, moving forward, I've got several significant occurrences and, I guess, reviews underway. We were contacted by the ISO Office of, their insurance service offices. We will be undergoing our, our review. It's about a five-year process, every five years, we review the, our insurance rating. We will be meeting with the folks from ISO on April 1st. We're preparing for that. We are currently an ISO Level Three, or a rating of three slash 10. So, three on a scale of one to 10, number one being best, number 10 being not so, not so good. We are a three slash 10, and that 10 goes to the open areas with limited water supply, access, et cetera. So, overall, even though that 10 doesn't sound very good, we have a lot of open space, undeveloped areas, so that's where that 10 comes to play. I am optimistic we're going to do very well this year. I, I really think with everything that's been invested, training personnel apparatus-wise, I'm hoping for a very good rating. Moving on, and I've talked about the, any questions on the ISO process? Sorry.
Chief, I do have a question, real quick. Is it, so, I assume that that ISO rating is directly correlated to insurance premiums, or somehow what customers pay for their insurance? Is that right?
If you'd like me to, I can explain.
Yeah, please.
Touch on that really quick. So, so it has a direct relationship to how insurance underwriters, it goes to your rates. So, number one being the best, and I'll use the City of Anaheim, the City of Long Beach, the City of Los Angeles, are ISO Class One cities. It's a combination of concentration, distribution, and reliability of resources, where their stations are placed, how their water supply is placed. And let me tell you, a large part of what is rated, we're reliant on our partners at the water departments, the water districts, for that water supply, to be able to provide that fire flow that's needed in those times of fire. So, that's beyond, completely beyond our control. We've, we've had the water department, the water districts in here, explaining their scheme of maneuver and their, their operating plans. But we are dependent upon them for a large portion of what we get rated on. Other, other considerations, apparatus, equipment, training, distribution of resources, and then, that's all factored together, and we're given points. And when those points total up, you get that rating from one. Being a Class One department is a very significant accomplishment. And we're a three, and, you know, we're, I'm shooting, I'm hoping for, I, I'm, we've been working towards a two, and we'll see how we play out. So, in that, so one being best, in ideal circumstances, a two to three rating, a three is very good for local residents, for homeowners. Dropping it to a two, homeowners don't realize as much benefit as commercial and industrial businesses will realize for, for business insurance purposes. So, it won't, we won't see a significant drop or result in the lowering of insurance, but businesses perhaps would. And, and so, that's how that's explained to me. We still aspire for those challenges, those ratings, to meet those standards, as a right of, just a right of responsiveness, and a, and a metrics to, to measure against other like cities. So, we're shooting for that, too. Ultimately, we'd like to be a one, but it's a pretty tall order. Did I answer your question?
You did, very thoroughly. Thank you. And I'm sure Calamasa residents are appreciative of shooting for that, too.
We're trying. We're trying. That's where we'd like to see it, see it be.
Chief, that prompted me with a question. Thank you. I, we just had South Mesa Water here do a presentation, and we're assured that we have a lot of water. But does the rating also take into account the number of hydrants and the placement of hydrants throughout the city?
It, it takes into account the water grid system as you're describing it. It takes in placement of hydrants. It takes in the water flow, and the water department's responsibility to test and maintain, and provide that data on that testing and the maintenance of those hydrants back to the fire department. And we have no control over that. We could ask, but the water department is like, is at their own, they, they get to do what they get to do. We can ask and be nice, and have a collaborative relationship, but we're dependent on them. But it depends on that.
Thank you.
So, I've talked before about the local responsibility area, fire hazards, severity zone rollout and the mapping. I'm sure if you're paying attention to regional news, and even statewide news, Governor Newsom invoked some mandates in that rollout, and what that looks like. I have been provided with the phasing of the rollout plan as the fire hazards severity zone mapping, and we will be receiving that map and open to make some decisions as a city on the 24th of, of March. So, March 24th, that map will be published. We've been given some mandates for compliance. We're going to have to make some legal considerations as to the municipal code for accepting and adopting new municipal code requirements. And I'd just like to talk about that for just a second right now. So, we've, we've talked about wildfire readiness, and most of us should be mayor, we've talked about it extensively, about those, those fire preparedness zones. Historically, and I'm going to talk about the one that's going to hit us all the hardest. Historically, there's been two zones. There's been a zone from, from zero to 30 feet, from, from the edge of the outside wall, or the eaves of your residence, to 30 feet out, has been the typical zone. And then, from 30 to 100 feet, that fuel reduction, fuel placement, those types of considerations to make your home defendable in a wildfire. So, zone, the, the new term that's going to come out, that's going to be mandated, is Zone Zero. So, Zone Zero will be from the outward edge, the wall of your outside home, to five feet away, must be clear of any, and I'm emphasizing, any type of combustible material. So, stop and think about that for just a second. Any combustible material. That means wood, plastic, fencing, furniture, anything within five feet of your home must be removed. Any type of shrubbery, anything that is, that is a combustible within zero to five feet of your home. So, not being an alarmist, but think about that in the communities that we live in. Think about the historical value and, and the ornamental shrubbery, fences, people's homes, and the implication that it's going to have. Again, I'm not being an alarmist, I'm just realistically just, I'm relaying what's, what the mandate's going to look like. And those types of things are what we're going to have to prepare for to accept some type of municipal code. Our city attorney's been in contact with us, talked about what those municipal code offerings would look like, working with our community risk reduction, Deputy Fire Marshal Rodriguez, to take a look and see what we're going to have to do with that. We will open things for public comment. And, and I want to explain this. When the maps come out, we have 30 days to present a municipal code. We have the same time to open up for public comment, or to receive an We have the same time to open up for public comment, or to receive and archive the public comment, but there is no mechanism to refute, to respond to the mapping, or to do anything with public comment. And, and that is the mechanism that's been handed down. And I wanted to, I have a, I went to a workshop last week, uh, I've been on several webinars, I have a full understanding, and I'm explaining to you what those outcomes look like as we move forward as a community. Uh, and we're gonna have some decisions to make going forward on that. So, um, Zone Zero will, will, will be coming down, um, after the, the fire hazard severity zone mapping, uh, be coming, coming forward with that.
Chief, would this be a good time for you and our city manager to do a joint podcast on that topic, just as it is? Cause I know you and I have talked about, uh, up where I live, how important it is for clearing your, around your house, but a lot of times, the eaves are what is, is where the fires go. Is there, is there anything you can spray on, to, on your eaves, or maybe you could share that information with the community?
So, so it'll, yes. And we'll talk about home hardening, what those options look like, and that, that is also, I talk about Zone Zero. Zone Zero has many different, um, many, some screening, um, the, the, um, boxing in or, or closing of the eaves, um, many suggestions and requirements, and legacy construction versus new construction, those types of building code mandates. I'm, I'm sure we're gonna be seeing many changes in the, in the, in the building codes in the years to come, and they're already there. So, most, most of them for new construction are already there. So...
Yes.
Chief, sorry to ask another question in your report. Uh, you, this Zone Zero mandate that be coming, is this gonna be, um, largely a recommendation for residents, or is it gonna come with perhaps punitive consequences or, or for non-compliance?
That, that, that is the question. The way I'm reading and understanding it, it is an unfunded mandate from the state of California.
Yeah.
Through the, um, Office of Administrative Law, Office of State Fire Marshal's Office. It'll be handed down in a, in a code, um, sequence in government code requirement, and, and we're just going to have to, either we adopt it or we don't, and then there's the implications, just like we've seen with the federal government and other state systems. If we don't adopt it, we're at risk in some form or fashion.
I got a question too, Captain. Um, so this is including, uh, patio furniture as well, too?
You can't have anything, nothing.
So, so that means there's gonna be some big concerns with, uh, with the homeowners? With what their patios in, than having their patio furniture out there as well?
Correct. Plastic fencing, you name it. If it's a combustible, the way that, um, I understand it to be written, that it, it doesn't, it's not allowed within that zero zone.
That's a big one.
So, getting to the positive stuff, and, and I'm sorry for the lengthy report. So, so I went to, um, last Wednesday evening, uh, Chief Malinowski in Ucaipa, um, had a, a, a last-minute, um, meeting and invited me, um, and just for the record, we're in lockstep. We're working so well together, it's, uh, it's, 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 it's a breath of fresh air. We're, we're really making a lot of progress. Uh, it's, it's a lot of fun, too, for our communities. So, we went to the Ucaipa Cali Mesa Fire Safe Workshop located at the Ucaipa Cali, or the Ucaipa Community Center, where I met with, um, uh, Ms. Laura Dibert, and she represents the Inland Empire Fire Safe Alliance. So we have some, some things that we're going to have to consider locally, um, as it relates to some, to some systems and some, um, I, I guess disaster preparedness, if, if you will, because this all kinda ties in, in line with that. Um, but we're, we're gonna have a couple of options. Partnering with the Inland Empire Fire Safe Alliance, and, um, I've made arrangements in the future, uh, we will, uh, probably do some community workshops, town hall type of, um, presentations and, and garner some, some community support, um, because we're gonna need to adopt, uh, and it has to be a grassroots, uh, movement. Uh, you've heard me talk about Fire Wise or Fire Safe councils. And when I say those three things, either the, the Empire, the, uh, Inland Empire Fire Safe Alliance, or talk about Fire Wise or Fire Safe and community mandate stuff, frankly, it turns people off. Um, however, if we ha, if we advertise, uh, insurance reduction workshops, and we market it, and we communicate that, and I'll work with Will on that, I'm sure we're gonna garner some interest, and we'll get some movement on that. Um, we've, we've made the outreach, um, we've initiated the, the conversation, and we're ready to move forward on that. And to give you an idea of what that looks like, Mayor, I, I keep going back to your neighborhood, and some of those councils can be as few as eight homes, and as many as twenty-five hundred. So depending on, you know, we have our, our folks in Summer Winds, uh, JP Ranch, that, that, that can form these councils, and then, and we could, on your street, get your neighbors, and you could form a council, and we, we put into work, we put in the work, um, and then, based on government code, the insurance commissioner shall look for those reductions and, and, and put some money back in your pockets and, uh, in terms of fight some of those insurance premiums. So, um, that's the end of my report. I'm sorry for being so windy tonight, there's a lot, lot to cover, uh, but I think that, um, we've got a lot of work to do in the next, uh, year or so.
Well, considering what's going on in LA and Pasadena, I mean, that, those are things that we can do, that won't take too much effort to, um, prepare our city, but we're already a fire zone and, and we pay the highest premiums. So I think that's, those are great recommendations. I hope that maybe through the podcasts, we can, um, reach people and educate them, um, because it's worth it, especially if, if there's, if there's some, if there's some way that the insurance commissioner would, would, um, reward cities, or even individual insurance carrier, insurance homeowners, um, if you do those, take, you know, take those efforts, it, that would be wonderful. Whether they'll do that, that's, you know, how do they, how to reinforce, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we've found with the insurance carriers, they're not really, tend to focus on individual homeowners, they tend to focus on regions, right? They look at zip codes and things like that. But, that's something through the com, the commissioner's office that probably should be looked at, in terms of creating incentive programs for people to do home hardening and different types of things, to say, you, it's kinda like with, uh, you know, you with the auto insurance, like good driver discounts, there's different discounts that you offer for that, if you can meet certain thresholds. I would think that something similar could be done with homeowners' insurance as well.
I agree.
I think so.
Thank you, for the good words.
I got one question to ask before you head out. Um, going back to the incident up there in the hills, uh, you said, it looks like it was a trauma accident. Do you know where, um, the patient got airlifted to?
He, he was not airlifted. Uh, we were working on, number one, obtaining air assets to locate him, because we were, for about fifteen minutes, trying to locate where the patient was in that remote area. Um, he was extricated from, from folks on scene, from laypeople, citizens on scene, and then put in the back of a private vehicle and brought down to the road, uh, because we didn't have speci, a specific area or a pin, uh, to where the patient was located.
And do you know where the patient got transported to?
I believe Loma Linda.
Loma Linda Trauma Hospital? Yeah. That, that's what, like a four minute, like a four or five minute drive?
Twenty-five to thirty, by ground ambulance, depending on traffic.
Okay. And then, uh, another thing, just like I asked our captain here as well, too, uh, what recommendations or support that you need from us as well, too, so we can kinda work as a team with Will and the team for...
Well, my partner, Captain Northrup, is being pretty humble. Uh, we need an off-road vehicle, uh, to access those areas, uh, a side-by-side of some sort, and I think it's time for us to take a look, since we do not have reliable air assets, uh, implementing some sort of a drone program, uh, as, as, as a consideration for going down the, down the road.
You just answered my question, cause I was thinking the same. Hey, well, uh, is it positive to add this to the next agenda for, uh, for discussion? And see if we have the funds to support the team?
So, are you asking for, I guess I just need to make sure, you, you wanna ask for, like, an appropriation for that, or what do you, I, I don't know what you're asking for?
Yeah, so basically, uh, what, uh, both of our colleagues just mentioned about, uh, to support them, they said they need a TV, correct? Uh, what else do you?
A, a, a tool would be, uh, an off-road side-by-side that could have access, uh, for fire and law enforcement, uh, either enforcement and/or rescue, off-road rescue or access, and potentially a drone program.
I, I would recommend that this comes as part of the budget discussion, cause we're getting up to the budget, we're gonna have a budget workshop on the twenty-fourth. I think this is probably a more appropriate conversation for that, cause it's, it would be something that would have to be budgeted in the capital, budget process.
So by doing that, uh, can we make sure that it's in the budget, so we can kinda see the numbers to support it, and if there's any other grants and stuff to support?
Well, I mean, it, the budget's not gonna be approved until June, but we can, it's something that we can build into the budget and make sure there's funding available for that and whatnot, and working with the Sheriff's Department, too, to see, you know, what they're working on with the grants and everything like that. We, if they're, if they're able to secure something that's for their, it's obviously for their use, it's not for the fire department's use, but, um, you know, we have to, these are important things, but we also need to, um, make sure we vet it for cost and things like that, because we're talking about a drone program, who's gonna, who's, who on staff's gonna be trained to do that? Who's gonna be, who are we gonna pay to do that? There's a lot of costs involved with that. Is there, is there maybe a better regional approach? And these are questions that we all need to vet out, so that's why I think that maybe that's a better top, topic of conversation for the budget.
Okay, and then at the same time, the team can probably, uh, get more information based on the, on the Sheriff's Department, see what you guys have as well, too? Captain?
We can get more information, um, regarding the grant, uh, and what it, what it is we're looking for or asking for. Uh, additionally, as far as air assets go, um, the Sheriff's Department does have aviation, so that's, that request can always be made, and we do have a drone at Cabazon. Uh, we are limited as to drone operators, but, uh, the Cali Mesa Pop Deputy is a, a drone operator. So that are, that is some resources that are available.
Okay, sounds good. So we can probably talk over with the team, and you guys can decide from there?
Yeah.
Chief Northrup, what about, um, we have a lot of equestrians here in Cali Mesa, it's possible we can, just, I know there's mounted posse in the Sheriff's Department, but that might be an, uh, an opportunity for either young equestrians who are, have horses, to work together, um, and come up with a, a program. They're already here.
I, I think there's a lot of alternatives out there, Mayor.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I can comment on that as well. So, um, we have a volunteer force for mounted, mounted, uh, posse, that, uh, we can make a request and they can come out, if we can identify some certain times where they'd be beneficial. Um, and then we have the mounted enforcement detail, which is actually sworn deputies. You may have saw them, uh, earlier or late last week.
Yes.
Riding around in the city, and they do have the ability to, um, enforce, um, the law, right, in those areas that, uh, that they can get into on a horseback, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that moves us to business items. Item number nine, PASCOM request for funding.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. On February third, um, Mike Barron appeared before the city council to request funding for PASCOM, and then at the next meeting on the seventeenth, the city council directed staff to put this item on the agenda for discussion. For background, PASCOM, uh, was established in nineteen eighty-three to assist local agencies and the public in the area of emergency preparedness. The city has contributed to PASCOM previously. Um, the most recent record I could find is twenty seventeen. I know that twenty twenty was mentioned, but I couldn't find that payment in our system, but I did find a payment for, from twenty sixteen, for twenty seventeen, excuse me, for five hundred dollars. Um, PASCOM is an IRS-recognized, uh, nonprofit organization. Um, and I know Chief was just up here, but I'm gonna have him come up again, because I did wanna have him speak, uh, to some of the ways that PASCOM can work with the city.
So I've attended PASCOM, uh, although not, uh, regularly, I, I, I've assigned that to, uh, either the deputy fire marshal, one of the battalion chiefs, and I can tell you that, uh, PASCOM is, uh, is very well entrenched within the PASC community as it relates to emergency services and, and more so, emergency preparedness. Um, through the San Gregonio Hospital, with the PASC hospital, all the PASC agencies, um, it's, it's a unique, um, collaboration, um, with a lot of different stakeholders. Uh, the, the tribal community has CONFAB, which is made up of all of, um, similar stakeholders, law enforcement, EMD, um, all, all of the same players. Uh, and, and right now, as we're seeing things transpire, and we take a look at what we've developed and what we've built over the last seven years, we submitted a local hazard mitigation plan, the LHMP. Uh, and we, we submit that to FEMA, and, and when we take a look at the LHMP, and I'll come back to PASCOM in a second, but we do a, a risk assessment, risk analysis of, of what our standing infrastructure and what those threats look like. Fires, floods, earthquakes, um, we take a look at the transportation corridor of the I-ten corridor, we take a look at, uh, the fault lines for, for the earthquake zones, and, uh, we consider railway, um, and electrical hazards. And I think that everybody's been around California, we've seen it with the California fires. It's been a while since we've had a good earthquake, and I, I don't know that that's a great, um, phrase, that I don't think there's anything such as a good earthquake, but it's been a long time since we've had a significant earthquake. Um, we've had some minor flooding, we've seen the devastation to our neighbors in the north, um, we've definitely dealt with fires, and, uh, the entire basis for, um, community readiness and disaster preparedness comes back down to our own individual households. So, what PASCOM does is, is it outreaches and it gives a lot of folks with a lot of resources in what we would consider the lay community. Not, not formalized EMS, not formalized fire, not formalized law enforcement, or, um, but it gives folks in the community that touch and that ability to continue to coordinate, to teach, um, ultimately to, we, we can use them as a, as a force multiplier. Now, I, I hope I see Mike's smile here in a second, but I think PASCOM's been underserved over the last several years. I think at one time it was, um, very well-engaged, and there was a lot of participation, but in the absence of, of, of local catastrophes, things dwindled off. Um, specifically in Cali Mesa, some of the things that we need to worry about. We have our schools, um, we have ten mobile home parks, and going back, PASCOM had a history, they had a, a cache of equipment, um, above and beyond, uh, I know we're probably thinking maybe Red Cross, well, if we got, and, and this is a separate conversation, but Red Cross has a different mission and focus than organizations like PASCOM. So PASCOM has the ability to make that coordination, collaboration, participate in programs like Listos, which is, which is a very, uh, it's a very, uh, it's a short program, very basic training for, for basic, uh, disaster preparedness, uh, in the home, and then they have the ability to grow out, uh, CERT programs. And we've talked about it before, uh, we don't have a formalized CERT program within the city of Cali Mesa, a, um, affiliated CERT. Uh, there's been some changes in emergency management with the county. Uh, so, we have some of these foundations, um, it's time to rekindle some of those relationships, um, and then, and then to reach out, uh, to see what we can rebuild and garner some of that support. The challenge is, and I've mentioned it a few times over the past couple of years that I've been here, Fire Chief, is we're all busy, volunteerism is on the decline, it's not on the increase, and it's gonna take some form or fashion, some, some sort of, um, we, we, we need to get some sort of, uh, driver campaign behind it, and, um, I, I support what PASCOM and, and, and Mike's been doing for years. I, I think we need to focus our efforts, uh, if we can, back on our mobile home parks, uh, because we know that those are, are, are very, can be sensitive. Um, communities are not as stable as brick homes, and, and, and just being matter of fact, um, that's, that's where our aging community, uh, members live, and, uh, those folks don't have the ability, uh, to take care of themselves, uh, in, in the same form or fashion that, that some other communities do. But again, moving forward, the, the schools, um, they have some pretty good programs. Um, I, I think there's value in it, for, 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 for my opinion. They need to, we need to be able to make people self-sustainable, and whatever that looks like to build the program out. So, I, I think I'm done campaigning, and, and I'll put my pom-poms down, um, but that's my understanding of it, I know that it's there. Again, I, I apologize, it's, it's always a, it, it's always a balancing act, I try to get somebody out there. I know you guys are doing good work. I read the minutes. Uh, it's there. Uh, we just need to bring it back to life and, and utilize it in some form or fashion. So that's, that's my story. I'm sticking to it if you have any questions.
Well, that sounds like another podcast topic.
Possibly, possibly. I don't have any questions. I just wanted to add that, um, you know, so the direction, I, I wanted to have Chief just kind of, um, you know, add some context because I think when we look at these community partnerships, we're trying to, it's an investment in the community and I think we're trying to see what either the community or the city's, you know, getting out of those, right? Whether it's community events or something like that. So that's why I wanted to have Chief kind of speak on that a little bit more so that there's more context as to what this investment would mean for us. So with that, um, staff is seeking, um, from the city council, direction as to whether, number one, whether or not we'd like to make the contribution to PASCOM. If so, what, what amount? Um, the amount that was requested, I believe by Mr. Barron, was $500. So, um, that concludes my report and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'll start with you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I have no questions in regards to PASCOM. I've known Mike for a number of years and the work that he and others do on PASCOM. And, uh, so I'm in favor of supporting that. So I would recommend us giving the $500 to PASCOM, you know, for them to use.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with, with their mission. I know it's, it's a small amount as well and Mike's talked to us a number of times about, um, this organization. So I definitely support their mission. Um, I think, uh, since we're talking about a couple of different nonprofits today and because we had just created our, the community partnership program, we discussed it at the past meeting. I think just to be consistent and fair, I think I would just request for this one, even though it is a small amount, to go through that community, uh, community partnership program so that we can look at each of these nonprofits and any others that apply. And then we can work it through that process that we just created. So that'd be my recommendation.
Thank you, John.
Do we have, do we have a process in place yet? Uh, um, my understanding was we were going to be working on that process.
Yeah, we're just in the, in the infant stages and, you know, this is going to be a heavy lift for myself and, and the finance director. And, um, that, the reason we had recommended when we did, um, to look at this in the summer after the budget process is done, because a lot, a significant amount of time of both Celeste's time and my time is being dedicated to budget at this point. So we just don't have the capacity to be able to put that together, um, right now at this moment.
Right.
Um, you know, our recommendation was going to be to establish an amount, a pot of money basically, for that program for the next fiscal year. So it's already appropriated and included in the budget. And then make those determinations later on the year for the fiscal year '26 only. Um, and then in future fiscal years, we would do that basically as part of the budget process. Maybe we do like a, in late winter, you know, ish time, we would put the, you know, request for applications out, put a deadline on and do the evaluation. And that way we can have that available concurrent with the, with the budget, um, adoption.
Right. Ideally, it'd be great to have our community partners go through that program. So I'm looking forward to having that in the future and want to encourage Mike Barron. In the future, make sure you fill out that application. Maybe we can get some more dollars to you too. But in the meantime, I would agree with sending the $500 this fiscal year to support PASCOM, for sure.
Edgar, any comments?
I agree too. Um, the only thing is, if Will or Bill can actually just kind of explain, is it going to be, uh, is it going to be a 500 one, a one-time thing or is it monthly? And then how is that going to get distributed?
This $500, it would just be a check that we would, we would write to the PASCOM organization. So it'd just be a one-time payment. That's all that's being requested. Any future requests would go probably through that, you know, if the council approves to make a contribution now, um, any future requests would go through that, through that system. And, and, and the idea would be that every year it'd be a one-time thing. So whenever we, we, we'd go through this process every year. So it's not like once you apply for it, you get the money every year. It wouldn't be that way. It would just be a one-time thing and you have to apply every year to get that money. Because there may be times where the council wants to contribute more. They may want to cut back because, you know, there's budgetary constraints. So, you know, you want to, you want to be able to have flexibility to do that. So that's, that's the idea. That's the goal.
Would it be appropriate to have Mike come to the podium? I'd, I'd like to ask him a question.
You are the chair of the meeting. You're allowed to do that.
I'm fully aware of what PASCOM does. I was very active in it myself. I know you work with the radio, um, ham operators.
Yeah, the Cali Mesa Amateur Radio Club.
Yes.
Yes, I'm a member of that. I'm a ham operator. John, uh, John Keith, also a planning commissioner, is also a member of PASCOM and has been for many years. And so we, you know, like I've said before, it's open to anybody. This is not just a private organization. All councilmen, we have councilmen from Beaumont, Banning. We've been, you know, we're trying, we have the, the, uh, governor's office. We have some people that show up from there that come down here. We have, um, um, Boggs Office has people that come there. So, and then all the mobile home parks from, you know, Banning, Beaumont, everything that we get. What I have been unable to do to get anything since I've been with PASCOM since 2006 is get our own. In 2007, I was able to get a grant from Mary Ashley for $20,000, which we took the, the mobile home parks and got them generators, got them, you know, about $1,200 in, in equipment and started. And as the chairman of the Public Works and Safety Commission for 2006, '07, and '08, then part of '09, before I got on the planning commission then, was doing needs assessment. But we don't have the Public Works and Safety anymore. And the lady that took over wanted nothing when I gave her all the paperwork. She said, this is what you need to do every year. And it's on your time. Like you said, we're volunteers. We don't get paid. So nobody gets a check or anything on the board or anything that I serve on for PASCOM. We're volunteers. And it's a lot of time. And when you say the things that we do, like with Will and stuff, showing them, all the paperwork and the stuff that goes along with that, meeting with people, I go, we go to the expos, you know, that's on our dime. We don't get something, we don't take that out of PASCOM money. And most of the stuff, like John can tell you, for the Christmas stuff and everything like that that we get, I buy that, you know, for about 40 people on the thing. And so it's an average between $400 to $600 just for me that I save up all year to be able to do that. And it's been very important and it's because I was appointed to this thing, thanks to Andrew Bennett, our, our fire chief back then. I was in Colorado when I got the notice and I got a phone call saying, hey, guess what? You're, you're the liaison for Cali Mesa for PASCOM. And I'm like, what's that? I had no idea what that was. And anyways, it's, I, once I started doing it, I just couldn't stop. I mean, we do it, I bring everything for him. Right now, we're working, trying to get a, an appointment with Estian's office so that we can work on getting another grant for the city of Cali Mesa. Cause, you know, I said, well, that was 2006. This is 2025. We, we want to do it again.
Thank you. I, I just wanted everyone to hear, um, if who wasn't familiar with what you've done for all these years. And so Will, would you entertain a motion, uh, to approve the 500 or do we just, um?
I think that you would entertain that motion.
I would like to make the motion that, um, that we, um, make this a priority and, and, and provide the $500 as requested with a plan for future, uh, future planning where we, we organize our donate, our, not our donation process, but our, uh, community giving pro, uh, pro, program so that we can make, you know, make it fair to everybody. Um, but I would like to do that. He, you haven't received any money for a long time. You're doing the work and I, I fully appreciate what you do for the city.
Even our personal bodyguard is a member of PASCOM.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. As president of PASCOM, I appreciate it. And well, we'll be turning that paperwork in for next year too.
Thank you.
You know, it's been a while. Thank you. And Will is right, it was 2017. I thought it was 2020. But after cleaning out the office and everything, I found the paperwork. I went, oh man, it really was that long ago. Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I'll second the motion to provide $500 to PASCOM.
Thank you. Is, is there any opposition to that motion? Do we all agree?
Well, at least we can vote. At this point, we just go ahead and finish voting. But, uh, I guess I can just, since you brought it up. But the only opposition I have is I'd like to see go through, through our next fiscal, like through the budget process essentially is, is my only argument, but I'm not opposed to the organization itself.
So we'll take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you. That's four one. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mike. Okay, item number 10, senior center, uh, monthly food commodity program.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll kick off this item. As the city council is aware, our successful grab and go food program, um, through FSA was dis, was discontinued due to a combination of COVID protocols being lifted and lack of funding. Um, it was going to be discontinued at the end of September of 2024, but the city continued the program for three months from October through December at a cost of $40,000. And FSA funded the program through January. So starting at the beginning of February, the senior center has reestablished the in-person meal program, which had been the program that was in place prior to COVID. Um, some of our homebound seniors became reliant upon the grab and go program and had friends or relatives pick up meals for them on their behalf. Um, for those, so for those seniors, being homebound means that they cannot come into the in-person meal program. And food from the in-person meal program cannot be packaged to go. So in order to ser, continue serving, uh, some of our homebound seniors, our senior center manager, Summer Wells, um, who works for FSA, uh, has established a monthly food commodity program. Uh, so at this time, I'd like to invite up Ms. Wells to discuss the program and what she is seeking from the city.
Thank you, Summer, for hanging in there.
Good evening, honorable mayor and esteemed council members. So of course, as you guys already know, we've been trying to keep our food program the way it was because our senior center is just bursting at the seams with people. Over the last month alone, we've had over 702 people just for activities that didn't include our, um, lunch program. But unfortunately, there is a small population of our seniors who just cannot make it in. And I, unfortunately, am the, the person that gets to hear the sad stories that the kids that are telling you that they can't come in because their parents are in wheelchairs and they just don't have the mobility and the transportation to get here on a daily basis to eat. Um, I have partnered with a couple of different organizations at this point and I do have a small food commodity from a private donor that should sustain us for about 10 months with a very limited box of about 20, 20 items, plus the fact that FSA has agreed to give us some perishable items such as a loaf of bread and a half a gallon of milk. Now with this program, I am only serving a very small number. So I have about 25 people confirmed in the program as of right now. Um, we did exclude the Ucaipa area because the Ucaipa, uh, the Ucaipa, uh, Office on Aging, they did get a, an increase in their budget while the decrease in the Riverside County's Office on Aging. That is why a lot of our seniors do not have the Meals on Wheels program in our area. Um, I know that we are Cali Mesa and we shouldn't be serving all the other areas in Riverside County, but I do have a small number of seniors in Banning as well as in Cherry Valley that are part of this program. To be exact, I have three in Banning and seven in Cherry Valley, while the remaining number is our Cali Mesa residents. Most of them, as we were speaking, are in our mobile home parks and are on an extremely fixed income. Um, and in our food commodity program, I'm hoping to provide at least a balanced nutritional box that comes in once a month. I've already decided that it would be the second Thursday of every month that they would be getting this food commodity. It would be very similar to our drive-up program where they would come up between 10 and 12 on Thursday mornings to early afternoon. And they'd pick up this box and it would include fruits, vegetables, protein, some pre-made packaged foods, um, as well as like rice, pasta, things like that that can get them through the month. So not only are they homebound and can't get out, they don't really have an opportunity to just go to the grocery store as easily as some of us might. Um, I've worked with Gutierrez's office and they were willing to give me some gift cards to Stater Brothers. Um, so at this point, I've been approved to go to Stater Brothers with those gift cards to buy things for the commodity program because they don't really have the opportunity to get to Staters, let alone move around Stater Brothers to purchase those items themselves. Um, I do have a full inventory as well as in the back. I've showed some, the, my back storage unit that we have all set up. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Do you want to start here?
Thank you for that, uh, presentation. So the 25 people you said that are shut in are just, those are Cali Mesa residents?
Uh, no.
Or there's three of those that are in Banning and then the, yeah, some in Cherry Valley?
So 15 are in Cali Mesa while the other 10 are three in Banning, Beaumont, and then the seven are in Cherry Valley.
Okay, and those folks are dependent on our program here in the city?
Yes.
They, and I think they, they, these are people that were originally in the grab and go program. Um, and I believe we were the only grab and go, were we, were, we, we were the only one that continued it after the COVID protocols lifted?
We were.
Okay.
And the main reason that I kept those in my program and excluded Ucaipa is, as I said, Office on Aging San Bernardino got an increase and they do have the ability to add Meals on Wheels. While I have it on very good authority from several different people as well as working with Office on Aging. Riverside County, it just does not have the availability to add any of our senior residents into that Meals on Wheels program.
And how about, um, the cities that these other individuals live in? Are those cities, have you contacted them to see if they're willing to participate?
I have not been able to get in contact with the cities there, but I have been in contact with, as I said, Ochoa's office as well as Gutierrez's office, who are working on getting the other donations from some of the bigger casinos as well as some of their business partners.
Okay, yeah, I, I just remember before I was elected to council, this had come before the council at that time. And I remember some of the concerns that were brought up, I thought were very valid, was there was no, at that time, there was no, um, no checks and balances, for lack of better words, you know, for residency and these kind of things. And, um, I kind of, I kind of have the feeling that helping our residents in our city should be priority number one. Not to be heartless towards those other folks, you know, that, that have need, but, um, if the, if the program's struggling, um, and we can make it work for a little while longer, to say that we're helping our citizens first, I think I'd feel better about that, quite frankly. But, uh, I'm, that's all the questions.
No, and I, and I do strongly agree. Um, of course, like I said, as I kept out the Ucaipa residents that were on there, which was quite a few, um, I am trying to not only work with the Cali Mesa citizens, but I am also trying to obtain funding through Riverside County. So if I exclude them, then it would exclude some of the other different areas where I'm trying to get grant money through.
Okay. Thank you.
John, did you have any comments?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of questions. Um, I know we covered some of this, uh, the last time, but, um, what, what exactly the requirements were as far as age and then how, how that information is like collected and verified?
So with that, they have to be 60 plus. We are not adding any new people into the program. These are people that are pre-existing that were already in our meal program. So it's mainly being senior and homebound. So some of them, even in our area, they may have fallen. And this is an incident that actually happened with one of our seniors. Fell on their walker and shattered their hip. They can no longer drive, let alone get in and out of their house. When the fire chief, he was speaking about some of those people that you come in to help lift them out of their beds and things. One of these women is actually one of those people that he does do those service calls with. So coming in here on a normal basis, prior to having her injury, she could come into the center and eat. But now she is very mobily incapacitated. So that's what we're trying to help, those people.
And was there, um, was there any income associated with that or is it just 60 years old and that's the?
We haven't based on any income at this point because most of our seniors that are in the higher income bracket, they're not coming in and asking for food donations. Um, now, of course, there is always a, somebody who could try to take advantage of the situation. Um, and we try to eliminate that. That's why we're not advertising this to the popu, the mass population. We're keeping this very limited so that we can help as many people as we can in the limited capacity.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, Jeff?
Yeah, thank you for the report and, uh, it touches my heart, the work that you're doing. It's really meaningful and important work. Um, I know you're, you're doing a lot, doing your due diligence to get funds from wherever you can and I commend you for that. Um, perhaps one other, uh, thing you could do is reach out to perhaps the city of Banning and see if, let them know that we're helping some of their residents. And if they'd be willing to contribute, it might be something you could do as well. Uh, but I have no problem with, um, I think you're wisely capping the program with where it's at right now. And those people who are in the program remain in the program but not adding anymore. That seems like a good.
That seems like a good plan, and I have no problem supporting the program. I don't know what you're asking. Are you asking for a specific dollar amount or just for, I didn't see that here?
Yes, I believe Will and I, when we were speaking before, it's $5,000 for the year, for the fiscal year, so not just till the end of January to December, $5,000 where I would be able to go out and purchase and account for everything that's being purchased for pasta, rice, beans, things like that, that can sustain our seniors in a large capacity.
Okay.
Edgar?
Thank you. You're doing an amazing job, and I know it was a very difficult decision based on Ucaipa, based on your leadership. So, I'm out there in the community for Ball Ma Unified, so I see it firsthand as well too. It's very challenging, sometimes you have to make those decisive decisions, and it's very hard. So, I understand where you're coming from, and thank you for the hard work.
Thank you.
And you actually answered, I was gonna ask you some questions, you actually, and I knew it, I knew you were gonna actually answer those questions because you actually reached out to the county supervisor, so I know he's gonna come through, especially Cherry Valley because it's part of the Riverside County area. One of the things too I wanted to ask, which I'm pretty sure you're gonna say yes, but have you reached out to the churches, our local churches around here and see if they're willing to support?
So, I have reached out and I've partnered with Oak Valley Church, which is a Ucaipa-based church. They do a great food donation every Saturday morning. The problem with that is that some of their food may be close to expiration day, and because we're blinded by certain restrictions and laws, I have to make sure that things are not expired or close to expiration day. Even though canned goods can last up to six months to a year after the expiration day, we're still limited on what we can provide here because if anything were to happen, a dented can or something, I don't want it to come back as being sued because they said that we poisoned them.
Yeah, I know that. Other one is the speech centers like Ralph's and Stater Brothers, have you had a chance to get in connection with them and see if they're able to donate?
Yes, I've actually reached out to Stater Brothers, put in for a grant with them, as well as Vons. I'm, of course, waiting to hear back. As you know, grants take a little longer than expected, so I, as of right now, as I stated, we have a 10-month supply to get food going. I do have private donations that are coming in with some of the basic rice and things, and I'm hoping to partner with different organizations, as well as the fire department and with the schools, and as well as doing just a mass canned food drive as well.
Yeah, the schools and the fire department will do a big support on that end. That's all my questions, and thank you again for your hard work.
Thank you.
Summer, I think you've done your due diligence, you've looked under every rock. I think you've been very thoughtful about, you know, serving people outside the city, and I know we're working on our community giving program. I would, and because the numbers are small, my only concern is that it's, this is a one-time ask until we get our program in place, but I would feel very comfortable in recommending, if we have the funds, approving the $5,000 request that you're making. I've seen your pantry, I see the work that you do. It's hard to turn seniors away from food, and you're very, you're very methodical, and I appreciate all the work that you've done. And so, if we have the money, I would make the recommendation that it's, you know, the one time until we get our program up and running as far as our community donation program. I think feeding seniors is a critical thing that we need to do, and I think you're doing a fantastic job in managing that. So, if the council agrees with me?
So, Madam Mayor, yeah, so as part of the recommended action, if the city, if the city council did choose to make a contribution, there is a resolution attached to this item that can be approved, and we can fill in the amount, just so that the council's fully aware these would come from reserve funds because we do not have appropriations to cover this expenditure. So, that's what the, that's what the resolution do, is it would approve the appropriation.
Okay, so I will make the motion to?
I'm sorry, excuse me, Mayor. I still have some comments.
Okay.
If I may. I do appreciate all of your work. I know I had a lot of questions last time, and I think you've addressed a number of concerns that I think that we, that we had before to kind of tighten, tighten the program up. I think this is definitely a good fit for how we're trying to shape up our community partnership program, you know, whenever we get that up and going. But my preference would be, again, just to move it forward to looking at the next fiscal year. I know we're talking about the remainder of this fiscal year is where you need the funds. I think, I think the big question with this program specifically is, when it's expensive, I know you've done a good job, you brought that down a lot, because I think it was about 40, 40,000, I think is what we gave last time.
For three months.
And so, it's scaled down a lot. It's still, it's expensive to feed, to feed a lot of people, and I think your mission, I think it's a great mission, and it's kind of, it brings me to the point of, you know, is this the role of this government? Is this what we should be doing with taxpayers' money? That's really the question that I'm asking. There's nothing against like the mission that you're doing. I think these nonprofits have an important role in our society, kind of filling the void, which is exactly what you're doing, and people are contributing and getting the program, allowing it to continue, and that's, you know, they have the choice and they have the funds. So, you know, bless those that give that money and keep all of these programs going, and it's very, very important. The issue or the concern I have is when we're taking the taxpayers' money to fund it, so I'm gonna look at it, I guess, through a different lens. So, I'm just looking at it, okay, as the council and as we're taking money that people aren't giving freely, unwillingly, we're taking from them, and we're gonna allocate it to this program as something that we should be, should be doing. So, when I look at the program from the mindset of, is this kind of essentially a government program to a degree, right, for providing the money? But the concerns of how it's constructed and implemented, where the requirements, even though they've tightened up, but they're still very loose, if this was like a government program, like you have to be 60 years old. I know last time we talked about it, none of that is being verified, the address or age or anything through government ID or anything else, I believe. There's no income because even other, other food programs, at least there's some type of income verification, just to, just to make sure, are these people actually in need? So, those restraints around the program, those kind of are there for this? So, those are some of the big, the big concerns that I have. So, and then the fact that it's regionally, and then you've tightened it up because you know that was a concern from before. So, you've made a lot of efforts, so I do appreciate those efforts. We're still, you know, feeding people in other cities, so is that something that the Calamasa taxpayers should be, should be doing, you know, feeding people outside of the city? It's another concern that I have, being, being critical of everything and looking at where these dollars and cents are going. So, I think for those reasons, I wouldn't support providing any more money to it, but I think moving forward, if that's next fiscal year, if we're revaluing the budget and we're looking at other nonprofits, and we're gonna fit that into what's going to be our community partnership program, if this is something that the council wants to do and it's part of that budget, then we can decide, you know, for this, for that fiscal year, whether it be 5, 10,000, whatever that may be, if the council thinks that's how they want to spread or allocate those funds, and if it's a program that they support, then that would be a different conversation, you know? I think that's a good program and how to divvy that money up, but I do have just those specific concerns out there, so I'll go ahead and stop.
And if I may address?
Yeah, sure, please.
As we're going into the new fiscal year, not only for all the state and cities and things like that, so is FSA. Now, if we wanted more requirement when they sign up for their intake, because every person in our program has to sign new intake forms at the beginning of the year, anybody in our program, I can work on getting further verification to ensure their age, their birthdays, and their address, to go ahead and answer that concern that you did have. Of course, as I stated before, I don't want to dismiss the few people that we do have in the other areas, Banning and Cherry Valley, because of the fact that the grant that I'm trying to get with the supervisor and with Ochoa Boa's office. So, I'm trying to keep that so that it's Riverside County and not San Bernardino County.
I appreciate, appreciate that. But also to add, I think you mentioned, but you did ask, you know, for other ways that we could help. So, I think if there's ways we could partner with or get word out, right, to try to say promote more support, to support the program, if there's ways that we can, we can do that, whether through our social media or any other?
Absolutely.
Other networking that we could do to help kind of bridge that gap that you're trying to close, like?
And very welcome for that.
Doing, doing any of that, if we have any creative ideas to help support that.
Yeah, and Summer and I, Summer and I have talked about that already, doing exactly that, yes.
So, I know, I know you say that you have food for the next 10 months.
Yes.
I've seen your pantry, and so maybe we can bring this back, maybe after we finalize our budget this summer in May, and look, look again at that to see if maybe you've, you've had some, some response to your requests for funding. I know the numbers are small, and I just have a hard time saying no to food to seniors, and the numbers are small living outside the city, but you have valid points. You know, we should be good trustees of public's money, but if we want to bring this back, maybe table it for tonight and bring it back through our budget process at that time, if that would be acceptable to you?
Yes.
But I would like, I would not like to dismiss this altogether. I would like to either bring it back, maybe after we have, you've exhausted all your resources.
I do want to add too, you know, we had, you know, through Assemblymember Greg Wallace, we had put together Assembly Bill 2410. To try to continue the Grab and Go program, and that is an option. So, you know, I had talked about two reasons that we had to discontinue it. One was the discontinuation of COVID protocol. So, basically, we'll continue to allow that program to exist. And so, to the extent that, you know, there's funding available and, you know, there are opportunities, you know, if we, by the way, I just wanted to say too, I did talk with his office this past Friday, and they did go ahead and submit a bill to try to bring, to resurrect this, and they're gonna try to work on cosponsors on the other side of the aisle to try to bring this to fruition. And so, my suggestion would be another source that may be in the future, again, this would have to be pending, you know, legislation and whatnot, but, you know, to the extent that the budget isn't used for the in-person meal program, say it's, there's a certain allocation and it's not all used, some of that money could be earmarked for this in there, that could be another source of revenue in the future. So, that would be another reason to support this bill going through the legislature. So, we want to make sure that it's written in a way that could cover something exactly like this, so that we would be basically using money that were already allocated through Office on Aging to be able to fund this program, then wouldn't have to come from the city, it's already coming from the existing program.
I want to add as well too. They made some good questions and stuff. You know, me, seniors, you know, we're all gonna be there one day. We work really hard, we put into our SSI as we work, and we pay taxes. Even our seniors, they still continue to pay their taxes. So, one of the biggest things for me is, you know, we definitely need to support our seniors, you know, they're, they're here, and based on my experience of what I seem to, you know, it's challenging. There's a lot of, there's a lot of seniors out there, just trying to see so you guys can see a broader picture of what I see when I do home visits. A lot of the seniors actually has, they actually have kids, they don't have parents, so they're residing with grandma, grandpa. Some of, some of the seniors are actually just grandma or grandpa. So, me, when I'm actually supporting the families out there, I actually have to go out of my way and find resources to provide resources to the families. It's really hard because usually kids don't go to school because they're supporting their grandma or their grandpa. So, that's a lot of the reasons why they don't attend school, and those are the challenges that I come across, and that's how I bring the kids back to school, because once we've removed those barriers, the kids are actually attending school and they're provided back to the community. And one of the other things is to, you know, if we can look in the future of how to provide the Senior Center Department on funds, so we can just have that money already on hand for the next fiscal year and for the future of, of our city, for that department itself, you exhausted everything. Now, you're, you know, you're reaching out for support. I was gonna ask you, I'm kind of getting a understanding that we're gonna wait until the next fiscal year. Are you short right now with, with resources to provide?
I am at a wall with my resources. I'm still trying to wait and hear from a couple of different organizations, as well as some of our business partners that I'm working with, to see if they can go ahead and continue to fund. As of, like I said, right now, I have 10 months. I broke it down into what I have in the food pantry. So, right now, it would be three cans of fruit, two cans of dried goods, four cans of vegetables, three things of pre-made meals, and three things of protein that would be provided, plus a milk and bread. That would be in each box that I provide every month.
Every month. And will that last? I know you said 10, 10 months, but based on the seniors coming in daily, would that be enough?
So, with that, so let me make that correction for you. It's only a few numbers, so I'm not increasing the number unless there's somebody in dire need in the city of Calamasa that, like I said, broke their hip and cannot come down daily to eat, or there's an emergency circumstance, or somebody just all of a sudden hit that poverty level that they just cannot make it here and they're injured. I have a lot of seniors that, one that just got basically kicked out of her kid's house because they're moving, and she cannot leave because her medical is only in Riverside County, and she's afraid that with all of her medical conditions, if she were to leave the state, she might not get funding. So, she is living basically SSI monthly, and any extra budget is going to extremely hurt her. I have a lot of seniors that come in, and if they have an extra bill because they had to get glasses because they broke their glasses, they have to decide if they're going to eat or not. So, unfortunately, those are the hard choices I do have to make within this program, but if they can come here daily to eat, I am not adding them to the program. It has to be a very severe situation and circumstance where I'm putting them on this commodity program. And so, that going forward, I'm hoping that these seniors can find other resources. I'm trying to work in having them added on to the homebound meal program as soon as there's an opening, that we can start eliminating some of those seniors from the program because they'll be able to get services delivered to their house.
Okay, so you're already doing the work, you're already educating the seniors by guiding them with the resources and like for the future, if future Calamasa, I mean, Banning residents, we can just kind of guide them back to their city and, hey, they have a pantry over there for anyone that's trying to come in, new or from Ball Ma as well too. So, you already have the structure built already, so that's good to hear. Now, you're requesting $5,000 for this fiscal year, right?
Yes.
Which will be current, like right now?
Correct, yes.
Is it possible to, you said $5,000? Is it possible to lower it? And can we get council to approve it? The reason I'm asking, you know, I will definitely donate. I'll donate my, my, whatever we receive from council, having them in cash to Nishacks. So, I'll definitely donate that amount, and then if my colleagues agree to move forward with our city and try to match the 5,000?
And of course, you know, my asking number is the 5,000, but any part, any donation is going to help us, and I'm not gonna turn anything away if it was $2,500 that I would just scrimp and save and really budget coupon, do whatever I have to do to make the pantry that I have grow and be sustainable for as long as I possibly can.
So, Will, I'll just put it to you.
I just have two questions. I know a whole lot's been said, so I just want to know first and foremost, if we postpone this, will it negatively impact what you're doing right now?
As of right now, it won't negatively, but being able to have the funding to be able to provide more of a well-balanced box every month is what I'm hoping to do.
Understood. And then, second question, fiscally, if we decided to do this this evening, where are we financially within the city's budget to do that? Would that negatively impact us? I know it's five grand, but do we have that to do that?
We do. You know, I think if we're looking at this, this action kind of in isolation, it certainly would not, but you know, my, my concern is staff, kind of maybe echoes with Councilmember, something that Councilmember Manley has said, is that we're considering two different, like funding? is that we're considering two different, um, like funding requests. Right after we just decided that we're going to establish a, a more, you know, formal type of thing. It's like, if, if somebody is watching this right now, are they going to come to the next council meeting and ask for money? And then we're going to have, keep doing this over and over. I'm not, and that's just, this is not a reason to not do this tonight, but I'm just saying, that's the only concern I would have is that, is this establishing a precedent that we're going to continually get requests ongoing rather than trying to go through this process. But to, I'm sorry, I just to answer your question specifically though, financially, you know, our reserves are healthy and so $5,000 would not be a significant.
So understand it's been a program that we've had in the city and they do need help. And the last council did give a little chunk of money. So we just need to make a motion then, right? At least, okay, so, so then I'll, I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025 dash 07, a resolution of City Council of City Calamasa amending the fiscal year 2024, 25 budget to include an adjustment in the community service, community partnership account in the general fund in the amount of $5,000.
I second that. Thank you.
Okay, Edgar's second.
Okay, I got that. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Summer. Thank you. Thank you.
I was going to make a comment though, that's all.
You're all going to make a comment?
No, it's, it's okay. I'm going to go with the eyebrow.
Okay.
I definitely do want to make a comment. I, I, um, I agree with, with well, but for me, for the seniors, the seniors is technically the, the department within our city because they are providing within the residents with the senior department. So I, I consider the senior department within one of the teams here at the city of, of Calamasa.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, that takes us to item number 11, City of Calamasa Sales Tax Update. The third quarter 2024, uh, July 24 to September 24.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, so normally this item would go on consent when we get this. We started doing this a few quarters ago. Um, but I did want to bring this up for just a, a quick presentation for a couple of reasons. First, we have two new council members. Um, so I wanted to highlight the fact that we are analyzing our sales tax receipts on a quarterly basis. I do realize this is, uh, we're now in the first quarter of 2025, almost at the end of the first quarter 2025. And yet we're looking at third quarter of 2024. There is a reason for that. There's a big lag on getting, um, so we use a consultant, uh, HDL. We've used them for many years. A lot of cities around us use them as well. I know Ucaipa uses them, Beaumont uses them, Redlands uses them. So a lot of the cities in our area use them as, as well as all over California. And they basically aggregate data from the California Department of Fee and Tax Administration. Um, and so they, it takes a while to get that data aggregated from them and then they put it together in reports for us to use. Um, so many of the detailed reports that we receive are actually confidential under state law and so specific titles. So city manager, finance director, economic development, they're the only ones that are allowed to see this data. So not even everybody in City Hall can see this. So very few people have access to it. And this is actually under state law. Um, it is actually carved into state law because it's considered trade secrets. And, you know, you could get, you could figure out exactly how much, um, a business is making based on their sales tax receipts. So we do get this aggregated data that we can provide in the report that's provided to you in the staff report. Um, so this report, this report compares the latest quarter of data to the same quarter in the previous year. And it also shares some analysis as to why some of these changes had taken place. So the second reason I wanted to bring this year, uh, this forward is to talk about where we are with sales tax. So our largest, um, as you can tell from the reports, our largest sales tax category is gasoline. And as such, our sales tax revenues are particularly sensitive to gas prices and gas consumption. And so as you can see from the report, revenue from gasoline sales, again, compared to the same quarter in 2023 is, uh, down fairly significantly. Um, and even with, is we've, we've been seeing kind of a high spike lately. Um, mandates for fuel efficiency standards combined with a mandate to increase the, uh, use of electric vehicles will continue to have downward pressures on sales tax revenue. And by the way, gas tax revenue as well, because that's not based on price, that's based on a fixed per, per dollar amount per gallon. So we've seen a long-term trend of actually a decrease just in nominal dollars for, for, uh, for, um, gas tax. So in real dollars and inflation adjusted dollars, it's even, it's even worse. So, and this, another point on, on, on sales taxes, um, you know, retail sales have experienced stagnant growth, um, only with some minor bumps associated with coast, post-COVID demand. But more and more, um, sales are being conducted online, um, which will continue to change the retail landscapes. We're going to probably vet all that out. We're, we're working, as you know, we're working with an economic development consultant to kind of do some market data for us and identify some opportunity sites for us to market. Um, but understand that, you know, the retail market isn't even what the same as it was six or seven years ago, much less, you know, 20 or 25 years ago. Um, so that's going to not only make a difference in our sales tax, but it's also going to make a difference in our economic development efforts. Um, and I'm, I've actually talked about this on the podcast. I'm actually going to do a deep dive into sales tax. Um, looking at what our share is, when you pay that 7.75%, how much we get, how much other entities get. Um, and then how online sales tax distribution works, because it's very, very important to understand how that operates. And it'll show you why, if you look at sales tax reports, you'll see, um, Beaumont with a big, big spike in their per capita sales tax. Um, and that is almost entirely related to fulfillment centers. So, um, you know, we, that is what those are. That's correct. So we're not looking for any action from the council this time. This is a receiving file. Uh, we just wanted to give you a heads up on some of these issues and trends. And to make, make sure that the city council understands and the community understands that our, where our hand is well on the pulse of this, um, activity. And so, um, as we start to look at the fiscal year 26 budget, I just want to make sure this context, um, kind of set the table for that. So you have that in mind. Um, we do expect our, our sales tax to be relatively flat. Um, and so I just wanted to kind of get ahead of that and explain why, um, as we go into our budget process. So, uh, that concludes my report and be happy to answer any questions. Oh, Celeste would actually like to add something to this. Thank you.
I just wanted to mention for context that we have about $1.65 million in sales tax revenue. So you see 7%. I don't know what that number means to all of you, but if we were to annualize that, that would be a reduction if it were to happen all four quarters of $115,000 in revenue that we had originally projected. That goes into that ongoing revenue that we're always looking at. We did, I did see the Measure A projections out for the next five years, which are directly, they are, that is funded through sales tax. And, um, their numbers have contracted down as well, outgoing for the next five years. So it's a trend that it's not just specific to Calamasa, but as Will had mentioned, it is the conversion to electric vehicles and many other variables. But we have to really be mindful and, um, careful and Will and I very much have our eye on this. And, uh, we just really want to be respectful and responsible and, um, just make sure that you're making, you know, fully informed decisions with respect to future revenue trends as well.
I just wanted, wanted to add too is that if you look at, um, you know, usually when I do the, we do the budget presentation, we'll show you some of the, some of the data that we get from HDL. And one of the things we do show is kind of the breakdown of sales tax, like a pie chart of kind of where our proportional sales tax comes from. And we compare that to the state. So they basically, it's the aggregate of all the state data of HDL, all of their clients. And so that gives you kind of a good idea of what the, the mix is for other cities or, you know, kind of like the average city quote unquote compared to us. Um, you know, one of the things that we don't have any car dealerships. We don't have any large box retail. We're obviously working to change that, but, um, that's why our numbers will probably look a little bit different. The reality is, um, you have a major interstate going right through the heart of our city. And so, um, that does, that is an economic generator for us. And that's why our gas, our gasoline sales are such a large percentage of the pie. If you look at us, we're about 34, 35%. You compare that to other, um, you know, basically the average city is probably around, between 10 and 15%. So, um, we're, we're going to be a little more sensitive to gas prices and those, those trends than other cities might be until that, until our, our pie starts to diversify, which again, is what we're working towards. Um, and that will come with growth and with, uh, other opportunities that come along.
Thank you, Will, for bringing this up to our, to our attention. It's, it's very important for us to look at, especially going into budget, budget season. Okay, thank you. So, um,
I got a question.
Oh, I didn't hear you. Thank you.
I wanted to ask the team. So you guys are saying revenue is going to get flat. Are we considering, kind of thinking outside the box of how to bring more revenue? Like for example, uh, a farmer's market within our city and art, just kind of be creative, just to kind of bring in more of that. And we can probably get more of, uh, our surrounding cities to come here and, and kind of contribute on, on purchasing?
So you said like a farmer's market?
Like a farmer's market.
Um, farmer's market probably would not generate any sales tax because, um, food from a farmer's market is not, not taxable. And the, Ucaipa does have one that they're, that they, that they do and it serves that, I think a lot of people go to that from here. The work that would, I, I, the concern I would have with that is to the extent that any revenue would be raised from that, you may, we're, we're going to run into some costs too unless you have a nonprofit to do that. But again, that takes also staffing resources to kind of manage that, that we just don't have. So, you know, if we're, we'd have to look at it, are we going to spend a hundred thousand to make 50,000 type of, of thing? You know what I mean? So we want to make sure that if we're going to, we, we want to, yes, we want to try to bring in revenue as long as it's not going to cost us more than the revenue it's going to generate type of thing. I think that our bigger, our bigger, um, goal to make big strides in this are going to be like the economic development study that we're doing right now. That's really going to determine what we can, what we can do to target, what brokers we can partner with to bring like very, you know, you know, significant, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions of dollars, um, in, in revenue. That's, those are the kind of things we're targeting. So we're, we're, we are working on that.
Okay. Yeah. One of the things I, I, you know, you said farmer's mark, uh, farmer's market, it won't create that much revenue. But kind of thinking more of like maybe putting the farmer's market at, at our businesses. So we can, so right after the shoppers purchase their, um, the products in the farmer's market, they can probably go and shop, um, in our local businesses, like the restaurants that we have, just kind of location, the prime location for them to kind of spend. And then spending in our local businesses where our taxes are actually higher on those areas.
We'd have to look into partnering with, you know, the retail centers. Those are usually private property. So we'd have to have them do that. I, something that, I think that we'd have to also look at ordinances to, to see that's something that we could, um, do, right Kelly? I mean, we, we'd probably need to look at that too, just in terms of planning and, and how that would work. So, well, that's something we can, we can explore.
Thanks.
Thank you. Jeff?
Quick question. Well, uh, one of the areas that we did do, we, we saw a significant increase here was in, uh, food and drugs. Pharmaceuticals, legal drugs. You, you made a comment how, about how food is, is not taxed. I'm just curious, would that be mostly than pharmaceuticals in this category of, or? Because restaurants is a different category. Food, grocery stores, right?
Yeah, your, your grocery stores and that's actually an area that we're uniquely strong. And you usually don't see a lot of sales tax growth in that because, you know, your, your markets are a combination of taxable and non-taxable sales, right? And so, um, I'd have to look at what the actual trend was. I don't recall if, when, when we talked to HDL, did they talk about this category or not, Celeste?
I, I believe they did. And I'm even, I just glanced at the national trend and, uh, food and drugs actually dropped by 1.8%. And they're expecting it to increase by 0.4%. And it does specifically reference grocery stores and grocery store profits. So it is that mix that Mill, uh, Will mentioned, which is you buy paper goods, you buy paper towels and, and some products. And that's not, um, that's put inside of that category that are, um, the, the Walgreens that we have here and so.
Okay, thank you.
For context.
Any other comments before we move on? Thank you. Okay, well, this will take us to Mayor and Councilmember reporting. Eric, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I did not attend any regional meetings. However, uh, I did attend, uh, several functions representing the city. First of all, the Lions, local Lions had an event on the 19th. It was a student speaker contest where I attended as a judge where three Ucaipa, um, high school students spoke on artificial intelligence. And, uh, the winner would then move on to the next round of public speaking and have a chance to win, uh, a certain amount of monies for scholarships. So it was, it was a very nice event. Uh, February 20th, attended the ribbon cutting and dedication ceremony for the San Bernardino Valley Water, uh, Santa Ana River Enhanced Recharge Phase 1B. Uh, this project was well over 30 years in the making and it's been completed, uh, which will allow capturing storm water from the Santa Ana River, uh, from groundwater storage, which will be a benefit to current and future residents in this region. Little context there, um, South Mesa, um, and Ucaipa Valley both procure water from, you know, San Bernardino. So, so this was a good, good thing, long time in the making that, uh, that finally was completed. On February 25th, attended the shareholders meeting for South Mesa Water. Their board of directors were sworn in and a fiscal report was discussed and presented. Uh, South Mesa showed that they're fiscally sound and provided, uh, itemized list of all their expenditures and savings uh, for the residents, uh, that they service, as well as a mention of a future project, um, much like the one that San Bernardino finished, uh, for an enhancement of, of water, um, for a groundwater storage that, uh, hopefully will be in our city at some point. So, um, that was kind of nice to hear that. So. And then on February 27th, lastly, uh, attended the Beaumont Chamber of Commerce Installation of Officers and Citizens Year Dinner. Um, and that was a nice thing, much like ours, uh, just to support that, that city because they came to our city and supported us. And it was just good to, to be there with a lot of different, um, people to celebrate those selected. And that's, that's all I have to add.
Thank you. John?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, on February 24th, I attended our, uh, Sheriff Ad hoc meeting, uh, with our two council members. So we just reviewed, uh, some of the contracts, issues and just overall services in there. And then I, same day, attended the, uh, our Summerwind Ad Hoc. So we just had some updates on the Summerwind specific plan. That'll conclude, uh,
Thank you, John. Jeff?
Um, I attended the Fire Ad Hoc for the city and the Mesa Verde Ad Hoc. Just got some updates from the chief about the state of the department. And then we talked about a future development coming to the community, which will have more updates, uh, to share on that. I also attended the RCA, uh, today and the WRCOG, which I'll provide a report for everyone about. But I wanted to share one item that I thought was, uh, of note in our discussion today. Uh, WRCOG, um, is going to be sending a letter of opposition regarding, um, proposed amended rules, uh, 1,111 and 1121. These are in response to the South Coast Air Quality Management District's proposed, uh, actions that will seek to transition away from, uh, to reduce nitrogen oxide emissions by transitioning residential furnaces, water heaters and to zero emission alternatives. Uh, basically what that's meaning is they want to phase out, uh, gas appliances. We're all electric, uh, in residential businesses and anywhere in the state of California. That's obviously problematic for a lot of reasons. And so fortunately, WRCOG has acknowledged that and is going to be sending a, a, a letter of opposition in response to this. Thank you. Okay. And so a lot of cities, um, at WRCOG, the conversation was pretty, pretty unanimously strong against this, as it should be. And so some of the cities had talked about putting together letters directly to send in, in, uh, response to this, in opposition to it. So I just thought I'd, I'd throw that out there. If we were interested in, in jumping on doing something like that too and sending a letter from our city, uh, directly in opposition to this, we can do that. Uh, maybe we can, uh, talk about that. But that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Edgar, did you have anything, anything, um, do you'd like to report?
Um, no, I, I just wanted to thank, uh, Mike and Will for a walkthrough that we did in our Summerwins community. Um, I do want to follow up here in the next meeting, uh, for the agenda that we went over for the Summerwins part about some descriptions, season concerns that we found. I just want to touch more bases. I just want to touch more bases and having more of a deeper conversation for our next meeting for that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I'll go over mine list very quickly because we're trying to get to a birthday celebration. On February 19th, Congressman Ken Calvert came to our city, met with myself, the Mayor Pro Tem, and our city manager to discuss city-county projects and the climate in DC. That was very interesting. He spent a lot of time with us. We're very happy to have him in, in our corner. On the 20th, February 20th through the 22nd, I attended the, the RCTC Annual Workshop. It was held in Temecula this year. And this was where they were asking for staff to give direction on upcoming projects. They, they're looking at updating the traffic relief plan. This is something that they're going to put on the tax, a tax on the ballot. They decided not to. More than likely, it'll happen next year. And that's to fund bridge and transportation projects. Also looked at the Coachella Valley Rail Project and really wanted input on looking at putting in a ramp metering in Banning and Beaumont, a discussion on that. And lastly, the, the commissioners gave consensus to move forward on all, all those things. It's very uncertain, the funding levels, but we felt it's better to recheck everything out. Also, on the 24th, attended RCTC Budget Implementation Committee. I chaired that committee and there were no public comments. And the highlights of that meeting were just discussing proposed policy goals and objectives for fiscal, fiscal year 25-26. They did their 25 calls for project prioritization, prioritization framework, and, and amendment to the City of Riverside's fiscal 24-25 Short Range Transit Plan. On the 25th, I also attended the South Mesa Annual Meeting. I brought for, I brought several things for, that'll be copied for the council and, and whoever would like a copy. And that's the financial report that they presented, as well as their agenda. On the 26th, I attended the SCAG orientation in Los Angeles. I've sat on SCAG for the last year and a half. They hadn't done an orientation in quite a while, but I brought also information, which is good general information on SCAG, how they work, what, what they do. They had presentations by the Executive Director and the President of the Policy Council. And on the 27th, attended RTA's Board Meeting where they approved, this is really cool, they approved to purchase five 40-foot hydrogen fuel cell buses. Get this, each bus is 8.7 million plus a thousand, a 1 million optional for equipment with a delivery date of 6/26. This is to meet CARBS restrictions on businesses on zero emissions. They, it's a very expensive process. They're also going to, to support that build, some, on both their sites, RTA's both sites, let's see, I have solar panels to support both the buildings and the, the buses when they get here. And then lastly, attended my first MetroLink Board Meeting in Los Angeles, where discussions were on a schedule change, financial reports, and a system, safety, security, and compliance update on key, safety key metrics. These are monthly meetings and the MetroLink, the good thing is MetroLink goes right to the headquarters where, where the meeting is so I can drive to San Bernardino and not just drive all the way to LA. And that covers my report. Thank you very much. On to city manager report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things. We received a letter from Plantation on the Lakes thanking us for the installation of the flashing stop sign. I know Mr. Keith also has thanked us as well. So we, we, we don't get that a lot. So when it happens, we want to, we want to point it out. So we, we really do appreciate it. And we also did install the flashing stop signs at, on Calamasa Boulevard at Avenue K. You know, the fire department, you know, tries to avoid that because there's been so many near misses at that intersection. A lot of people realize there's, there's a stop sign there. So just driving through, I've seen that, people drive it. But ever since the, the flashing stop signs, I've noticed a difference. I don't know if other people have, it's anecdotal, but I've noticed a difference. And then finally, I wanted to wish my wife, Jennifer, a happy birthday. It's her birthday today. So that's what I'll be doing right after this.
Well, I would like for us all to sing to her so that she knows we're thinking of her. Ready, begin.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Jennifer. Happy birthday to you. hubby's coming home soon. Okay, and with that, with no other business, we'll, we'll conclude our meeting at 7:54. Thank you all for hanging in there.